All right. Cool. All right. President Johnson, you're ready to go? Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education Committee of the whole meeting for August 17, 2020. Once again, unfortunately, we're coming to a virtual. If you want to follow along with our agenda tonight, you can go to our website, lavonianpublicschools.org. Highlight over the board tab. You will see a drop down menu that has board information. If you left click on that down on the left hand side, you will see meeting agendas. If you click on that, you can follow along with our agenda tonight. We do have a number of items on there for discussion. If you are turning in to see a lot of discussion and questions on items that have already probably been to the board through a study session, then this is the meeting that you want to watch. This is where we get into the nitty gritty. Much of the information is brought to us and we are discussing it tonight. So we welcome you all. Hopefully, we'll get done with this meeting on time and then we will go into our regular meeting around seven o'clock. If we go a little bit over, please forgive us for doing that. So we'll start out with our item one, our audience communication and Mrs. Jenkins advises we have a couple of those. I'll turn it over to her. Good evening, Mrs. Jenkins.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, President Johnson. Tonight, we have four audience communications via our Google, Google form that is located on our website. The first is from Nadia. No last name. I'll go ahead and read Nadia's audience communication. The state of Michigan instructed districts to come up with a plan for schools for phase three, phase four, and phase five. During the school board meetings, we have only been told about a combination phase four and five. Does this mean if our region of the state is moved to phase five, the schools will continue to follow what is being done while in phase four? When is phase three, when is the phase three plan being presented to the school board and community? Or has the plan for phase three been voted on? As a parent of two elementary school children, I am disappointed in how the district put a divide between in person and Levonia virtual. Why is remote different from Levonia virtual? If Levonia virtual is following the LPS curriculum, when a class has to quarantine, why isn't the teacher in the class picking up on the Levonia virtual curriculum where the class left off on the last day in school? I hope that the district groups elementary children doing Levonia virtual with students from their home school before grouping them with students from other schools. The next communication is from Katie. No last name on this one. Why are the ASD students that we as staff are least able to social distance from need the most hands on support and are, and are least likely to tolerate masks beginning the school year earlier than their gen ed peers? Yes, the class will be smaller, but being so completely hands on and unable to tolerate masks overrides that. The next communication is from Lorraine. No last name on this one. Good evening. I watched the board of me, the board meeting last week and was in disbelief. I cannot believe that the board voted on a plan that will send our program back to school while everyone else remains remote until October. That is so unfair. Basically, I feel like we are being sent back as guinea pigs. Why are we, why are we any different than the general education as far as the health and welfare of our staff and students? I'm not comfortable with that decision along with my coworkers. Why are you all putting the kids least able to social distance and wear masks back in the classroom setting before numbers say it is safe? And taking temps? Temperatures? What? Leave, leave it to the parents. Did I hear that correctly or did I hear that right? It's common knowledge that many of these parents in our program are irresponsible, are irresponsible when it comes to sending their kids to school sick with temperatures. When they do have temperatures that we take, they come, they, they come to pick up their child hours later. I'm writing to you because I want the school board to consider and address all safety measures for our program as well as the general education program. We matter too. Does the district have enough substitute staff to cover absenteeism? Will a janitor be, be available ASAP for cleanup? Should a student get sick? We are no different and I believe that the school board did not approach this responsibly for the safety and welfare of our center program. Thank you for reading my email and I hope to hear for, hear some responsible actions. We consider coming back. Thank you. And she does actually sign her last name. This has been submitted by Lorraine Strong. The final communication is from first initial D, last name Locke. A number of school districts around the country returned to face to face learning in August and found that they have already needed to quarantine either classrooms. And in some places, in some cases, close entire school buildings and take the lessons back to online communications only. In many cases, these, these are states with higher infection rates than we are currently experiencing in Michigan. But it is also, it has also happened in states that were doing fairly well. I have already decided that my child will participate in Levonia virtual for the fall semester. But I would like to encourage my fellow parents who either have the ability to be at home with their children and direct the virtual learning themselves or with the combined resources of a small family or neighborhood pandemic pod to consider the same if they can do so safely. This will decrease the number of, number of students present in the classroom and on the bus and make social distancing more likely to be successful. For those who need face to face learning due to neurodevelopment, neurodevelopmental considerations for their child or because they have inflexible work schedules requiring reliance on the school for childcare as well as education, I would recommend you start making a backup plan now. There is a good chance that we will have the same fate, fate of spiking COVID cases forcing return to virtual education here in Levonia. And it will be better to have resources lined up in advance rather than have, having to scramble at the last minute. None of us want the current situation for our children and none, none of the, oh, none of this seems as ideal. But it is the reality that we have to work with. And that concludes audience communications for the committee of the whole.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins. And I should have, I should have indicated before we started audience communication that the board has three roles as board members and one is to create policy. The second is to hire and evaluate our superintendent and the third is to align our budget to our long term fiscal goals. So if your questions related to any one of those three items or three areas and you, your, your questions required a response, then it would come from the board. If it relates to anything other than those three areas and you like a response and that would come from our administration. Just wanted to be clear on that. So we'll move now to item two, our committee of the whole. There are no items listed on the agenda. Is there anything additional, Mrs. Oakwist, for committee of the whole?
There is not, President Johnson. We are prepared to move on to the finance committee.
Thank you. So we will move on to item three, finance committee, and I will turn it over to our chair, Mrs. Bonnefield.
Thank you, President Johnson. Our first item on the agenda tonight is the budget update 2020, 2021. And Mrs. Smith is going to help us with that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bonnefield. I'll start off with an update on the 2019, 20 budget. As you'll all recall, we had news in mid-May that we should anticipate and plan for a budget cut. So we prepared a budget cut of $650 per pupil, which for our district is just under $9 million cut to our general fund. So that's what was brought to the board in a final budget amendment. And I am happy to report that that cut wasn't as significant. We did learn in July that we could anticipate that the cut would be $175 per pupil. The legislators were able to move some other funds around and use some of the federal funding to lessen that cut for the local district. So for the 2019, 20 school year, our actual cut, we're anticipating to be $175 per pupil, which for us is a cut of $2.4 million from our general fund. So while it's still a sizable cut, it's, you know, much better than what we had anticipated in June. So we're definitely thankful for the legislators for working their magic and making that happen. But again, the cut for our general fund was about $2.4 million instead of nine. The other item from the 2019, 20 budget we had adjusted for in June was the potential that we wouldn't be getting our Wayne County Enhancement Village in time to have it count for 1920 revenue. And thankfully, at the end of June, we did get our Wayne County Enhancement Village funds. So we had anticipated collecting $6 million this school for the 1920 school year. And we did, in fact, end up collecting the $6 million for 1920. Some of the other adjustments we hadn't made in June, we were planning to do a transfer from our health and welfare fund for about $1.6 million and that we went ahead and did. We also planned to utilize all of our 31A funds and not have any carry forward. We went ahead and used all of those funds. We did have some revenues come in lower than what we had included in the final amendment, but those were offset by the better news on the state aid side. On the expenditure side too, we're still wrapping up our expenditures and getting in those final invoices from the 1920 school year and paying those. But all in all, with the changes that have taken place, we're looking at our fund balance to actually be flat for the 1920 school year. And in fact, it might go up a little bit because of some deferred costs. So that's much better news than what we had anticipated again back in June. So we, I just are, my, the professional organization I follow, the Michigan School Business Officials just did publish some information today that I'm reading through related to the 2021 budget. We, I didn't see anything in that communication specifically related to what our foundational allowance will be, but there is a change into and how they will do the pupil count. Right now, the pupil count is figured for, by 10% of our spring count and then 90% of the current fall count. And now they're looking at doing a blended rate and taking 75% of a blended 1920 membership rate or membership count with 25% of account from the 2021 school year. So that'll help us with some of that stability of not knowing exactly, you know, what our enrollment will be for the fall. So that's definitely going to be helpful. Just in general, you know, the state of Michigan is in a state of declining enrollment. So we do recognize that this is an additional cost that the state is taking on. Because of that decline in enrollment, they thought that the foundation allowance would be going down, but now it'll be actually going up in total across the state by about $45 million more than what they had anticipated earlier this year. So that's some promising news. We're still waiting on some additional information. We've learned of some additional COVID related funding coming in. Stemming from 1920, but it turns out that the governor signed it on July 1st. So the accountants are all trying to figure out if that money will be recognized in 1920 or if that'll be a 2021 revenue. So I'll keep you up to date on that. But those are just a few positive things that I wanted to share with you on the budget. I'll continue to update you. I anticipate for our next meeting in September, I'll have more information too to share with you. Not only on our final numbers for 1920, but on the upcoming 2021 school year. So I went very fast. I'll stop there to see if that, anybody has any questions?
Question, Dan?
So that was really helpful, I think, explaining everything that happened. The state has like a consensus revenue conference coming up on, in a week, I believe. And maybe a week from tomorrow, where we'll have a better sense of revenues. And first glance, it looks like they might be better than predicted, especially on the sales tax side. So we'll keep our fingers crossed for that.
That's great news.
Anybody else? Colleen?
Yeah, I would just like to take this opportunity again. We have done it many times and, and it bears repeating every single time, I believe, to thank our community and our staff, students and families who helped us over this past eight to 10 years to build our fund balance back up again so that we could weather things like a sudden $2.4 million budget cut without having to cut our programs to our students. Thank you so very much to our entire LPS community who worked so very, very hard in order to get our fund balance to a situation where we can get through a COVID crisis and still provide excellent education for our students.
Liz?
Thank you. I'd just like to continue where Colleen left off. We have managed to learn how to survive in our underfunded state. But just because we've staunch the bleeding doesn't mean that we are there yet. And we still need to work with our legislators to fund schools adequately. We have a lot of other things on our plate. We have some big issues that have taken center stage. But it's going to be a continual reminder that we really need to address the underfunding of schools in Michigan. That has not gone away.
Anybody else? Mrs. Oakwist?
Thank you. And I would concur with all of those, all of those statements. And I, I really do think that we need to continue to pay close attention over the coming weeks as discussion is held in our legislature with regard to school funding for this coming year. So while we are still anticipating a per pupil cut of potentially a significant dollar amount per student, we know that our costs are going to continue to rise as we look to put in place additional staff to aid in lowering class size as well as additional PPE requirements and other programming costs. So I think it's important that while we continue to be very fiscally strong within Levonia Public Schools, we certainly don't want to lose sight of the need for clear advocacy for adequate school funding. We have a tremendous amount of research behind us in that regard. And we have continued to be a voice in that, in that way from Levonia Public Schools. So while we are fortunate to be in the place that we are, and you're right, Mrs. Burton, that is the result of very, very diligent work on, on many people's parts, including our school community over the years. The support of the Wayne County Enhancement Village, which has allowed us to do some tremendous things in this district. We want to continue to be able to do those things. So it's important that each of us lifts our voice and advocacy for the students that we serve and to be able to continue the outstanding programming that we have to offer.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist. Is there anybody else? Okay, that's going to wrap up A. President Johnson, I see Mr. Stotter has joined our call. Would it be appropriate to skip down to C with your blessing?
It depends. How quickly can we get through the tuition rate?
Tuition will be very quick.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So B is the 2020, 21 tuition rate. And L, Mrs. Smith is going to help us.
Thank you, Ms. Bonnefield. And as the board knows, we have a board policy currently. And in general, we do not accept students from out of the district, but there is, we do allow for some exceptions and an example might be a junior that's moved out of the Levonia Public Schools boundary, but would like to complete their senior year with Levonia Public Schools. We do allow admittance and we do establish a tuition rate as prescribed by law. So that tuition rate is calculated by using the prior year's outstanding or operating expenditures and dividing that by the total number of pupils to come up with a average cost per pupil. So for this coming 2021 school year, the proposed tuition rate is $10,947. This is up $234 from last year. And so how that would go about would, we would still get a foundational allowance for that student coming from another district. But the difference between whatever we collect in foundational allowance from the state and this calculated tuition rate is what we would be invoicing the families for. So this is something that we're required by law to approve on an annual basis. And that is why I bring it for you, for your consideration, for our regular voting meeting later tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Does anybody have any questions on the tuition? Is it, would it be appropriate to move that to the consent agenda since that's something that we normally do every year? Is anybody opposed? Can we put that on the consent agenda then, please? Okay.
Assuming that was okay with the board, we did look at last year, it was placed on a consent agenda. So we did put it on for the consent agenda for this regular meeting later tonight.
Okay, thank you. Then off to C is refunding of prior bonds and Mrs. Smith is on the floor again.
Thank you, Ms. Bonnefield. As Ms. Bonnefield mentioned, we're joined by Paul Stotter from PFM, our financial advisors, to discuss this topic with you tonight. Just as a general overview, we currently have three debts outstanding on behalf of the district. One is our 2013 bond series one. That was sold in 2013. We also have the 2013 bond series two, which was sold in 2013. Um, one is our two thousand thirteen bond series one uh that was sold in two thousand thirteen. We also have the two thousand thirteen bond series two, which was sold in two thousand sixteen. And then we have a third, which was a refunding we did in two thousand fourteen. So what we would like to discuss with the board tonight is um in kind of simple terms is the idea, just like we do with personal residences, how homeowners might refinance their mortgage. We're looking to refinance or refund some of our outstanding debt to take advantage of better interest rates, uh lower interest rates that are available um lower than what they were when we sold these bonds. And so um in teaming up with PFM, um, we've begun to look at these opportunities. I'm happy to report, hopefully I'm not stealing Paul's thunder, but we're looking at savings for our community, our taxpayers of um what we estimate to be over ten million dollars in interest. Um, so a huge savings, um again, because of these lower interest rates that are available. Um, this is money that wouldn't uh necessarily, this isn't money that would come back to the district and be available for additional purchases. This would uh be lowering our outstanding debt, so it would be less that we would have to collect from our taxpayers to pay that outstanding debt. So um in teaming up with Paul, we've solicited um proposals, RFPs, from three different underwriters. And um we're proposing going with the lowest cost underwriter, which is JP Morgan. Um, they also happen to be the uh vendor that we used for the two thousand fourteen bond, and we were very happy with their uh service, so we think uh that would be wise for us to move forward with them. Um, I do want to share that there is some cost uh associated with re- uh refunding these bonds, similar to if you were to refinance your mortgage, but the uh interest savings that we will be seeing definitely cover any of that uh cost that will incur as part of this refinancing. I'll also mention that the refinancing does not come out of our general fund, that it would come out of the debt retirement fund, so this is no new or additional cost to our general fund. So that was a bit fast. I'll pause it, turn it over to Paul, uh if he has anything that he'd like to add. But really, we did want Paul here in case you guys had any questions. Um, we wanted him to be available uh to to answer those if I couldn't.
Uh, I assume you can hear me? Everyone? Um, yeah, so right now, um, I mean, ten million dollars. Um, we're actually thinking that it may be more than that. Tremendous, tremendous uh opportunity, and it's a result of really historical low interest rate in the marketplace right now. Um, we're seeing interest rates in the one and two percent range, um where when we issued these bonds, originally we were in the four to five percent range. Um, so if we can uh lock in these interest rates, um, yeah, it results in savings directly uh to the Livonia taxpayers. I'm excited to do it. Yeah, we've got a few weeks ahead of us to get things in place, um assuming the board uh gives the go-ahead. But um right now, um, everything uh is is uh looking very, very good, uh to say some very substantial dollars.
Mrs. Oakwest?
So we would certainly recommend this um for you this evening. Obviously, we're taking a look at, as Ms. Smith said, at the series one bond, bonds as well as the two thousand fourteen refinanced bonds. Uh, the series two bonds are two thousand sixteen. They are not applicable um for this opportunity. However, we believe that this would certainly be obviously another example of the board's um outstanding stewardship with regard to their fiscal responsibility and um an important message to share with our taxpayers that when we have the opportunity um to do so, um that we're going to seek those opportunities to make um good fiscal decisions that result in either benefit to the school district or benefit to our taxpayers or both. Um, so in this case, the opportunity to save over ten million dollars of repayment from our taxpayers is significant, and we would recommend your consideration and approval this evening.
Questions? Um, I'm gonna go with Mr. Centers and then Mr. Johnson.
Uh, mine's more of a comment, and this will go probably on notice to vast majority of our community, but um, Mrs. Smith and the whole cabinet um are always looking for opportunities to really help the community save money long-term. Um, and uh it is certainly appreciated, and uh I think it does build credibility when we go to uh to ask for investments in our district that when we have the opportunities, we we do everything we can to save the city and our taxpayers' money, so. Uh, thank you for all your hard work. Uh, I'm excited to support this when it comes back up.
President Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Bonfield. Uh, Paul, I I know that the two thousand sixteen issue uh is not eligible, but for those people who are watching, can you explain why uh they're not eligible at this particular time? Uh, yes, sure. The uh, when bonds are originally issued and sold by the district, um there is a period of time when the investor enjoys the rid return and the district does not have the right to call those bonds back in, and typically it's a ten-year period. In this case, um, two thousand sixteen is a little bit too far out um for us to be able to refinance those bonds and and generate a savings. Um, but two thousand thirteen, fourteen are close enough where we can make the economics work um and and really provide some very substantial savings. Okay, thanks, Paul. Appreciate it.
Are there any other questions? You guys all set? All right, then that concludes finance for this evening. Thank you.
And is is that going on regular?
It is.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Stotter.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. All right, that takes us to item four, our curriculum committee, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Johnson. Uh, on the curriculum committee tonight, we're going to hear from Mrs. O'Brien, who's going to address an update on digital resources to support online learning.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Um, I just want to check, I'm having some computer problems this evening, so please just let me know if I'm freezing up or you can't hear me. Um, I've tried to reboot and start over, so it seems better than it was when we started the board meeting. I just wanted to spend a few minutes just sharing with you some of the resources we'll be purchasing to support students with their um online learning this year. Uh, none of the items meet uh board, the need for board approval for the purchases, but I just wanted to share with you some of the great things that we'll be providing our students to use um in our remote start and um as we continue when we have one foot in the digital world um beyond once we're in person. So at the elementary level, our um wonderful literacy footprints guided reading materials last spring came out and immediately in March started taking some of those books and digitizing them. And probably about a tenth school ended, they had digitized about two hundred other titles. Um, I, in a given grade level, we have four hundred to five hundred titles. So they they made a dent, but of course, since then, they've now digitized them and there is a cost to use them. But one of the nice things is that because we have been purchasing those materials over the past two years, they've given us sixty percent off of the digital licenses. So our student licenses, instead of being ten dollars to have access to the online guided reading books, um, per student are only four dollars per student. And then there's a teacher uh platform for them to access word study videos and other things that help them teach guided reading online, and they are giving us that also for sixty percent off. Um, instead of twenty dollars for a teacher license, it will only be eight. So it's it's a little under twenty thousand dollars total for all of our students and teachers, but it's well worth that investment for them to be able to do guided reading online. So we are very excited about the possibility to support our teachers with the whole library of uh digital text plus um teacher support materials. Um, for our high school and middle school math classes, they have been looking at um wanting to use Delta Math to support students, so this is also uh an online resource that has a sample problems for kids to practice uh what the teacher has taught, plus problem-solving opportunities, and it also uh has a uh assessment, so we can see where kids are. So we will be using this with our middle and our high school math students, which, you know, right now we use iReady with our elementary students, so this will be a nice match to that. And for all of our students, it's twenty eight hundred dollars, so this one's quite uh a bargain for our teachers to have access to Delta Math this year. Um, and science, so we did a lot last year sharing with you some of the simulations for Amplify that we've purchased for fifth through eighth grade. So our wonderful Mrs. Caldwell has found um a site that has lab simulations for our high school science courses, all the way from biology to AP courses. It has activities and simulations for our students to practice that um give them that lab experience with the same concepts covered in our curriculum. This one is about five dollars a student and five dollars a student, and so it is also just under uh twenty thousand dollars. So I just wanted to share with you those wonderful resources that we'll be adding to our teachers' curriculum resources. I also was hopeful to bring iReady to you this evening, but we are um refiguring what those licenses would look out, look like, taking Livonia Virtual Students out and and having their uh licenses be separate, so we could track their diagnostics and their use of the instructional. So we'll be bringing those next meeting. So any questions?
Mrs. Bradford?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Hello, Mrs. O'Brien. My question is, are those licenses, is that just a one-year uh fee? Is that what you do for, it's for a whole year then?
Yes, one school year.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Frank?
Um, thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. For those iReady, um are we expanding our usage of them or to be able to be used? Um, or are we using them in the same way?
So we've used the diagnostic every year for the last several for all of our students K through eight. Um, but we've only used the instructional licenses with targeted students, so we are going to be purchasing that. I'll be bringing that to the next regular meeting. For instructional licenses for all of student, all students K through six as a part of our uh remote learning.
Okay, and then um is there gonna be a lapse between last year and this year because we're not approving it tonight or or it will cover?
So we met with the the representatives from um Curriculum Associates on Friday, and we have two different options. We've been working with them for a couple of years. One of the things we're wondering is, um, should we wait till maybe the third week of September to do the diagnostic to give kids that chance to get in and get to know their teacher? Sometimes coming right in and testing is not always the best thing. But they did say that um depending on when we decide to do that first diagnostic, they could restart kids from where they were in March, or they could restart the instruction based on the new diagnostic. So actually, Mr. Hillard and uh Mrs. Corey were talking about that today, what we think would be a good uh plan for moving forward with turning on the instruction, which would be the better way for kids to do that. You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments for Mrs. O'Brien? Seeing none, President Johnson, that concludes the report of the curriculum committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. That will move us then to item five, our building and site committee, and I will turn it over to our chair, Mr. Centers.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Um, the first item that we have this evening, item A, is personal protection equipment purchase. Uh, Mr. Francis is gonna discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Um, I'm bringing to you for approval, it's actually several per, I shouldn't say several, really, it's it's two, two different vendors, but it is several items. So um we have from School Specialty, a proposed purchase of Plexiglas barriers, two styles. One is just a single shield, single pane with feet that would sit at a desk or a table, et cetera. Um, and we have another set that is a uh three-sided with the sides being hinged. So what we're looking to do here from School Specialty is order uh eight hundred of each. If you're looking at the proposal, the three-sided does say two hundred, but if you look at it, it's a pack of four. So we're looking at eight hundred of of each, and the intention here is we've already purchased um two hundred from another vendor previously and have them in uh in stock and actually uh putting them into rooms already, the single panes from a different company. And this would be to put these through classrooms, idea being that, and not just classrooms, but um also wherever they may be needed. So the idea is to say, a teacher in the classroom, a psychologist, uh an EST, et cetera, et cetera, different folks getting them so that they can have a barrier at their desk or where they may need it, and they're not that difficult to just simply pick up and put at another area. So if a high school counselor is in their office and they're using theirs at their desk, but they want to go have a conversation in a in a small uh room, a small group room in the counseling office with 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 a student or two, they could also pick it up, put it down at the next table. And then the three-sided with hinge is meant also for uh working with small groups of students, so you could uh seat uh the the children at a table and within my, this really had originally in mind um like guided reading lessons or any time that you might want to work with a a couple, uh two to three different students, you can sit the three-sided barrier down. Because it's hinged, you can sort of move it in and out, so it fits the table, and then you would have three students and then the the staff member on the other side, so all all folks involved would get a barrier. So we're looking at this um purchase, like I said, through School Specialty at an amount of, let me check my file number here, both of those together. Checking around, so trying to find, so it's fifty-five, one forty-four and for the singles and sixty-seven, one fifty-two for a total of um I didn't told that one out. I told all four of them together, so, but you you can you can do the math on that one, it's over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then we're looking at a second uh vendor, which is Ferguson Facility Supplier, which is um, we we do quite a bit of business for our facilities and and cleaning needs through Ferguson. We have a variety of items um from them, and you'll see them on two different proposals. So we're looking at different-sized uh gloves, disposable gloves. We're looking at um pediatric-sized children's masks, and we have already gotten some um, not the extra small for children, but I guess you would say regular size or medium size for children. Uh, they're, they would be a little big on a very small child, though, so we're getting even smaller. Uh, we also are going to purchase um shields in small and mean, they're actually child-face-sized shields in small and medium. So that is one proposal you can see, and the second Ferguson proposal is for um the wipes, disposable wipes and buckets that we are using uh to to disinfect flat surfaces, et cetera. So we've been already purchasing these disposable wipes and buckets, and this will be actually a different-style bucket uh that we believe will work even better, because currently we've had a little bit of issue with air getting in our current bucket, so we're switching the style of bucket. But you can see here that um we have the the purchase of these, and then we actually have our building supervisors add the 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 um disinfectant to the bucket. So what we're, what we're doing is instead of buying um a a pre-slug, like a Lysol or Clorox uh box, and I think I had mentioned this to the board previously in the conversation uh at the last board meeting, it's a large three-hundred-roll bucket that then we also put in the the disinfectant, so we can simply reuse the 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 bucket or the container. The building supervisor can come, put in an additional roll, and then add the the disinfectant to the appropriate level as needed, and and that's how we will continue. It's it's more cost-effective, uh but it's also much, much larger than a traditional bottle that you would buy at your your local grocery store. So this in totality, um seeking approval for just kind of calling it the blanket, uh PPE, personal protection equipment, totals out for the board uh uh to approve at a hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars, and that would go out in two different purchase orders.
Does anyone have questions? Uh, so Mrs. Bradford's being first.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Francis, and how how long do we um anticipate those supplies to last? Like, is this is just like a first round or uh we don't, we don't know if we'll need to order more, or how how does that work?
Yeah, so it it really is is something, this isn't our first round and it probably won't be our last round. be our last round. It's akin to the old saying, how do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time? We're just going to keep taking bites out of this and continue the supply chain, order in order continually through. What we sent out last week was a survey to many of our employees. And now we're seeing some of the items that they have said, yes, I would like to use this, that or the other. Something like wipes, we know that we're just going to continually supply those. But we had to originally guess, you know, how many masks would each person have and how many shields would somebody want? So now we have a much better idea. While we already have those items in stock and also on order, we know that we can order more and continue to have the appropriate amounts so that not only does the LPS warehouse have them in stock, but our plan is to deliver those to buildings upfront based on the survey and the employees that work in those buildings and give them even more than that. So each building can have a stack of these items. Then a paraprofessional, a teacher, whoever can always go up and say, look, I didn't think I needed a face shield before, but I realized that I do want one now. They don't have to wait, their principal can hand them one. And when the building runs low on these items, they will order more from LPS warehouse, will deliver to that building and then they can restock themselves again.
So that's how you replenish, like a teacher, if she runs low on something, the chain of command would be to go to her principal and the principal would then be, or custodian, however you're going to deem it. Because I know that is one of the questions parents often ask is, what if, and teachers, how do I get extra supplies and how, what will, what will that look like? So I'm assuming that's going to be the chain of command, you would check with your principal and then you would need more replenish as needed.
Sure, and depending on the item. So we're going to, you know, obviously have our building supervisors and custodial staff keep an eye on certain supplies like the wipes and the disinfecting that we're, that we're using. If they are starting to go low, you would order more. If teacher notices that their bucket is going low, you know, they should inform and say, I know I'm going to need, you know, can I get another roll? Building super can come and reload that. If the building super then sees on his or her shelf that's going low, so it's sort of that whole chain.
Yes.
That's exactly what we're going to be doing. And so it's going to take everybody making sure that they inform somebody if something's looking low. But yes, we're going to use our, the smart system that it's the smart warehouse system. It's all computer, computerized requests and building secretaries generally do them. They can put them in, fire it away to our folks in the warehouse and Mr. Lau will have it delivered out to the building.
Okay, that's great because I'm sure that's going to be one of the big questions, especially the timeliness of, like you said, a staff member will have to, you know, see if they're running low and make sure they know the proper person to go to, to get that right away so that they don't run out. And they say, well, I didn't have enough or I didn't have this. That shouldn't be a problem if they are watching and seeing where they're at with their materials and such, that they know exactly where to go to order to get the more, to get more product.
Yeah, they should always be, whether we're talking about, about these types of items or anything else, they should always communicate with their building supervisor and if they're having trouble at that end, they should talk to their principal and we'd work with them that way.
Yeah, and I think that'd be a great idea for beginning of the year to make sure the staff knows exactly where to go, how to do it and what the proper protocol is. Because I, again, I see that as a, something that they are going to be concerned about. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Frank.
Thanks so much. This might be a subsequent question, but the intent for these is not to use these throughout the whole class, right? These are just for teachers, these are not for students. And the, for the shield, the partitions, if you will. And then the other thing is that it's not also intended for the teachers to sit behind all day, correct? When they have masks on, they are, they are going to be able to walk around the classroom and still be moving about the classroom. It's not that they're going to be sitting behind the shields just so the parents know out there, that's not the intent of them. Tell me if this is correct, but I've heard from speech therapists that say they need to see the kids' mouths move or they need to see as they're making their words, that they can use this barrier if the kids are taking their mask off for speech therapy. I mean, Dr. Terrell, you can speak to that. Is that correct? That's what the intention is for? It's not that the teacher is going to sit behind this all day long. But when there is closer communication than a six-foot distance, that they're able to still have a barrier but still be able to see the kids, is that correct?
I can speak to the speech and language, Mrs. Frank. So our speech and language pathologists do need to see the students' mouth because they teach proper placement for some of our students with articulation deficits. So the student needs to see their mouth and they need to see the student's mouth. So the Plexiglas provides that barrier between the student and the staff member at that time. So you are correct.
Okay. And therapists, maybe if they're, not therapists, maybe some of our social workers, if they're meeting with a student or even some of our early learners as they're learning how to read and that sort of thing. We've heard comments that it's going to be difficult if the kids have a mask on, but this is going to be an option that they could utilize?
So it is, it is intended for when you can't have that distance. So if a student needs to come up and get additional assistance, or if you're working again with an individual or a small group, we wanted to give teachers both the option of the single sheet, which may be at their desk, or the tri-fold, which was, which is really designed for that, again, the guided reading table, the kidney-shaped table or a small work table with an individual or small group of students. And so it really is designed as an additional barrier of protection when you're within that, that six feet of distance.
And just for the teachers, not for the 20 kids in the class, every student doesn't have a shield that's dressed at the teacher's desk or at their group work.
That's correct. It is just, it is just for the teacher. And then everyone in the class would be wearing the facial masks. And you're right, the teacher may be wearing a shield during their instructional time.
Okay.
And I'd like to clarify just real quick that when we say, and I think, this is Frank, I know what you mean when you say teacher, but I want to make sure that, that our employees understand that psychologists are teachers and ESTs are teachers and counselors are teachers. So that's what we mean by that.
Thank you. And Phil, you said we're getting the child's face shield. Those are for kids who cannot have the masks? Is that what those are for?
Correct.
The majority of the students, correct?
Correct. The idea, as we discussed previously, is if there's a medical reason that's documented and brought in that a child couldn't wear a mask, the next step would be, can the child tolerate a shield? Because a barrier is better than no barrier.
Okay. And just in terms of numbers, we are asking parents to send the kids with a mask if able to, and the district will provide one if they do not have one or the child forgot it that day. But we are intending to ask parents to send a child with their, with a mask, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to just make, make sure that I say this out loud to the board and to whoever might be listening at home, that this is not our first purchase of cleaning items or PPE. It may be the first one we've brought to the board. It's because of the amount and the state requirement for the board to approve certain purchases above a certain limit. Many, many purchases have been made throughout the spring and summer and those have been under the board amount as we buy different items. At this time, what we realized was the Plexiglas is expensive. And so that, that raised the amount. And then once we knew we were going to have this on an agenda, Mr. Lau had simply increased his orders for other items and we figured we'd bundle it together for board approval. But again, for, for people to understand, certainly in mid-August is not the first time we're looking to make purchases. We've been purchasing items for months and we will continue to purchase.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Francis. Well, this will be on the regular voting. All right. The next item is item B, data center hardware purchases.
Yes, thank you. I've invited Mr. Tim Clan into joining me, who is the Administrator of Educational Information and Technology with the District. And we are bringing for board approval, a recommendation to purchase not just the hardware, but also the services of CDW for our head-end room, as we call it, the data center and a new server. Very, very simplistically and very simply, if I can just throw it out there and then I'll let Mr. Clan just thrill you with the technological words and information. But i- in a nutshell, we have a server right now. It is about eight years old, does that sound right, Tim?
It's actually about six years, I believe.
Six years old. So that server is being filled up, obviously. It is older and it runs different, you know, a little bit different, older software. Our plan is to use the old server that we certainly currently have, not to toss it out, but to put all of the video from our cameras across the district to store it on that server. So that will give us a little more space on it and take all of the critical needs, items that run like the classrooms and the board office, et cetera, and put it on the new server. And there will also be cloud storage in this package. So we're going to run two servers, one that is solely for video. So if that goes down, the worst that happens is we may have lost video that after a certain number of days we would remove anyway. And the new server has all of the critical data on it. So with that, Tim, I'll let you maybe spruce that up a little bit.
Sure. So some of the systems, and again, Phil's right on track with the, all those video systems and cameras are currently running on that older server now and filling it up. And our goal here is to remove some of our more critical systems that run in the district from that older server, put it on a newer server that is partially in-house, partially cloud-based. And that includes a lot of those critical systems are things like the internet access, our security systems, state reporting, state and reporting and testing, some of the video conferencing, the, all the controls for our HVAC systems, the workstation logins, digital licensing systems that we use, identity management and all our printing systems as some examples of, some of the systems are currently running on that old hardware that we're migrating over to the new hardware. I think the biggest point is this will give us, this new hybrid cloud model, I guess you can call it, allows us to expand and contract as our needs grow into the cloud and out of the cloud as needed. It's going to help reduce the initial cost of this type of a system. The ongoing maintenance costs will be less. Gives us better security and also allows us to recover from some sort of catastrophic failure, flood, et cetera, in a much shorter time when, you know, as far as bringing all those systems back online, either through the cloud or in-house. So as well as, you know, redundant power supplies and more automated maintenance cycles to help reduce the amount of time that staff is taking to maintain those systems. So I think Bill gave a good overall. I'll try not to go too much into detail unless somebody has some specific questions for me.
We're losing viewers, Tim.
They're falling.
So CDWG is the, is the vendor. And just for, for the statement, the, the amount of the server, hardware, services, et cetera, $296,650.47. And that would be coming from the district's technology fund.
Great. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Tim, maybe, maybe you can answer this. Was our present server purchased through the 2013 bond or it was?
Yes, it was. It was purchased in 2014, I believe, right at the very, very beginning of the bond process.
And how long would we anticipate the new server to last?
Typically, we estimate about five years. And, and at that point is when we start having issues, not necessarily with the hardware failing, but with lack of support and updates from the vendors to keep that system running. Or, and it gets a lot more expensive to keep it running at that point.
Okay. And with this purchase, we're getting vendor services as well?
Yes.
And are these services that are included in this contract on an annual basis or do they extend out longer than that?
They extend, I believe everything in here is, is a five-year, there could be additional costs as we move along, but they'd be, they'd be much smaller yearly type maintenance costs.
Okay. Great, thanks, Tim, appreciate it.
And that, that, that is something that is pretty much what we, we have with, with all of our technology, the Chromebooks, you know, from something as simple as a Chromebook all the way to something as critical as a server. It really is that the, the hardware on these items might last, it's the software as well as the, you know, the, the support from the companies that they limit that. So we start to see concerns and potential for failures after that five-year mark. And that's really where we are continually looking to replace on that as-needed basis. And the need isn't that, you know, the, the Chromebook itself or the server itself is a bad item, it's that it's not going to function in the, the current environment that we have from lack of, of support on the software side. Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Clan for joining us. Thank you, Mr. Francis. We'll put that on the regular agenda for later this evening. That moves us on to item C, which is.
Laptops?
Oh, sorry, I went, I went muted there. Thank you, gentlemen. Item C is carts and laptop purchase. Thank you.
I'm going to ask Mr. Clan to stick around in case he wants to add anything to this, but we are coming to the board with a recommendation to purchase laptops and carts from CDWG. We have two different quotes that you had in your packet. One is for 36 laptops and one cart. And that cart of laptops would be for the administration building at Central Office. It will be loaded with the smart software, which is the RISA smart software that the finance office uses, HR uses, and several of us use, as well as any other software that may be needed from our secretaries to our accountants, from HR, insurance, et cetera. This cart would be used in two different ways. One, as a checkout type of, of item. We have found that we do so much, even pre-COVID, you know, this, these mobile meetings, we run to one of the buildings or we just run to a conference room and you leave your desktop, but sometimes you can't just leave your information, that, that type of financial information or et cetera is required. So we thought we would bring a cart for the office for people to check out as needed based upon having to run to a building or simply working in a group, collaborate, et cetera, as well as if in the case of the, the administration building being required to have to work virtually based upon the, what the government does and what the governor announces with our phases and the direction that we go, could also then have them to more acutely work at home. So the software is really critical piece of this. A Chromebook cannot do what the laptop will do with regard to the specified hardware. We've talked about these before with, with students as well. The second part of this, and that, that part is that one cart would be $31,248. And then we have 192 laptops, which would fill six carts. And this would be a little bit different setup. It's not necessarily for the heavy software or for employees, these are for students. We want to take these six carts, spread them out over the three high schools and get mobile devices in the hands of students on as-needed basis. And if we need more Chromebooks in the hands of perhaps the younger students, we could, we could always move them around from, from the high schools if need be. But this is just an effort to use the district's technology fund, which the one cart would be from, as well as these six carts would be fun from. It's an effort to use those dollars that we've had specific to technology to get more mobile devices in the hands of students. As a side note, Chromebooks, and I'm just anticipating the question of why not get some Chromebooks, those are, last we had the most recent update, aimed for March to April is the earliest anyone can get them. That is just part of, part of the supply chain that's coming from, from those, those models of Chromebooks. The laptops, and this is more of a student version of the laptop, it would be a much shorter, we're looking at probably six to eight weeks at the most on, on the laptops where we're talking spring for the Chromebooks. on, on the laptops where we're talking spring for the Chromebooks.
Mrs. Burden.
Um, if we are looking at potentially, uh, you, well, we're looking at the, the second batch that you discussed being used for students, are we talking about some of the students that are going to need to have one in their home? Uh, or are we looking at student use strictly in our buildings? And where I'm going with this is, uh, we have the charging carts, but what about if they need individual charging cords and so forth? Does that come with, do, does that other charging capability come with each computer?
Yeah, the cart, the cords are in the cart. We, much like we did when we gave the, the Chromebooks out last spring and as we're doing this fall, um, you can, you can open up the cart and remove the cord. So it's really set up that, that it's easy to slide in and then the whole cart plugs in, but you can, you can pull them apart. Is that accurate, Tim, on these?
And, well, and actually these, these carts come pre-wired. So the devices come and each device comes with a power supply cord, but they don't, they, yeah, additional. So that can be kept aside in case that device has to be taken, uh, by a student or someone somewhere else. And then the, the charger in the cart will stay in the cart.
Exactly. That's, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim.
Other questions? Anyone? All right. That also will be on our agenda for this evening.
Yes, please.
Um, now move aside to item D, which is copy paper purchase for 2020, 21 school year.
Yeah, I know you've all been waiting for this one. We're, we're about a month or two behind on our annual copy paper, uh, purchase. So, uh, we, we do have in front of you a, a quote for copy paper. We're basically, and it's a little bit lower than you see each year. And I think I wrote in my memo, obviously, we didn't go through as much, uh, last spring. So we're essentially replacing what got used up in the three quarters of, of the school year from last year. It is the same company, copy, or I'm sorry, Contract Paper Group. Uh, they have the Wayne County, uh, bid on this. And so this is satisfying the board's requirement to bid. Uh, and so I bring to you this year's, uh, amount of 103,872.42 cents. And my request would be, and I think we already have this set up if, if the board is okay with it. It was on consent last year, so we had set it up to be on consent this year as well.
Uh, Mrs. Frank.
Thanks so much. Um, so, uh, Mr. Francis, are we still? I guess this is a question that I don't know the answer to. Are we, and maybe Mrs. O'Brien, are we providing, uh, materials, copies that sort of for people who are doing, um, online learning, virtual learning, who have chosen the virtual learning? And so are we providing that? Are we counting that into our amounts for people printing from home? Um, I guess that's my question.
I, I would have to say, I have to refer to somebody else. I don't know the answer to that question for you based upon the virtual learning.
And I do not think that we have a plan that is like spring where parents could have paper copies instead of virtual copies. So I think we have, you know, for the first three weeks of remote, um, learning, there will be opportunities and things teachers will pass out in a learning packet at the beginning of the year. Um, and so maybe there'll be some paper copies of things. Their everyday math journal will certainly be one of the things that gets sent home. Um, for Levonia Virtual, I, I don't believe our plan was to create paper packets. So with the asynchronous work that we have planned, it would be things kids would do on their computer. Uh, that's a great question, though. I don't think we've gone that far beyond, you know, the first three weeks of school thinking about that. But it would not be like the spring where the spring week created, um, so paper experiences and activities for parents who didn't have the opportunity to get online, um, when, you know, we were moving forward with curriculum. This would, this would be different. So I, I don't think we have a plan to do that, but that's a great question. I definitely will look more into that.
So, uh, thank you for that. So, Mr. Francis, does that have a, uh, impact on how much we purchase? If there's going to be that many students who are not in the classrooms utilizing paper, that sort of thing? Or are we planning to buy the same amount and then what we don't use this year have for next year?
Right. And, and we have paper from last year that we're rolling into this year. The, the print department, if we were to do something in any kind of large scale that went through the print department, they purchased their own. This is, this is not for the district in totality in the sense that our printing department is separate from that. This is what the central office and the, and the buildings will use. So if there is some type of, um, large-scale item that goes through our print department, this would not be affected by that.
So if the buildings are not using as many simply because there's not as many kids in the building, we can save this for next year or, um, I mean, I know for next year, helpful to do a cost savings or because we, this year cut it or because we don't know exactly what it's going to look like for the classrooms that we would still keep the same amount? I guess that's my question.
Right. We're trying to prepare as if students will be in school, learning face-to-face. So we're going to pre- prepare for that. Um, and if we need to order more down the road, it is the county contract. We, we could just make, place another order. But generally, we've, we've done a pretty good job of, of using, uh, past history as we order from year to year.
And just to jump in there, um, so typically this is like a single purchase we're making at the beginning of the year for the entire year. In essence, we're going to create a purchase order that we can spend up to what the board approves. So in the event that we don't need this, uh, that much, uh, then we simply won't place the order for it. And any, any balance that, of paper that we do have will be, will be used next year. But I know there's signs behind that why you have too much on hand because then, you know, it gets the air to it and it's not great or whatever. So you do kind of want to, um, get just what you need for the year. Um, but again, what the board would be approving tonight is for us to spend up to that dollar on, on the paper purchase. And then if we don't need it, um, we would not spend it.
Perfect. That makes so much sense just because our previous years are so different than this year. And so I think that that's great that we can purchase it in chunks as we needed it. If we don't need it, we don't need to purchase it. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. We have that on the consents. Yes, we do the consent agenda for this evening. So, thank you. Uh, our next item is item E, purchase for furniture for art classrooms. Again, uh, Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. This is a, um, bond, 2013 bond purchase. These are, uh, elementary, upper elementary and middle school art classroom furniture, meaning the tables, stools and chairs. Uh, this is an item that was started, uh, back over the, the wintertime and we, we are picking back up on this one. So we were, are recommending to the board for, uh, two companies actually, Interior Environments and, uh, Smith Systems in the total amount of Uh, depending on the level, for example, the, um, I'm just thinking it's the upper elementary. I did not start this purchase. I picked it up from our friend, uh, who we are all familiar with, who, who started this. So I'm, I'm a little shaky on the memory from those months back. But I believe this, the chairs are going to upper L and the stools are lower L. Um, and then the tables are rectangular. I, I do have pictures of them. If anybody wants to see a sample style of them, I can, I can email you a, a picture of them. Uh, and we are going to do butcher block. That was the, uh, the art department's, um, requested for, for the butcher block tops. And these are replacing 20-plus-year-old furniture in our elementary and middle schools.
Great. Um, questions, anyone? All right. Seeing none. Uh, we will have that on tonight's.
Yeah, Mrs. Oakquist. Mrs. Oakquist.
Go ahead.
So I'm just going to mention that, um, you may recall that when we had the remaining bond funds, uh, we identified a number of areas, especially some of our, um, classroom areas for our electives classes and went to each of those, um, teacher leaders, as well as our administrators to find out what additional needs still exist. And so, um, while we did report out last December, we were essentially closing out, uh, the bond expenditures. Um, we do have some of these dollars remaining, which really adds, um, just some of those additional finishing touches that we were, um, that we're really pleased to be able to add into the classroom. So as you know, our main focus for classroom furniture was on student desks and chairs, tables and chairs. Uh, and then we moved into things like cafeteria tables and, um, music stands and additional furniture to be able to enhance not only our core classrooms, but our electives areas as well. So, um, we appreciate the input from, uh, the teacher leaders and the committees that work to help us, give us feedback, um, on the needs that exist for those programs.
Absolutely. Thank you, uh, Mrs. Oakquist. Uh, so that item is on our regular agenda later this evening. Uh, that brings us to our final item for building insight, which is purchase of technology for special education. It's on the Act 18.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Uh, Student Services is bringing forward a recommendation for additional technology for students and staff in our Act 18 programs for the 2020, 2021 school year. We are recommending 70 10.2-inch iPads with Apple Care protection totaling $37,609.65 and 100 HP Pro Book 360s with Care packaging totaling $58,900 for a grand total of $96,509.65. These items have been approved by Wayne County RISA for our 2021 Act 18 budgets for our MOCHI program, our VI program, our ASD program and our WorkSkill program.
Great. Uh, does anyone have any questions? Well, these sound like great resources, uh, for our students. Um, we appreciate, uh, that they'll be added. Um, we will again have this on our regular agenda for later this evening. So thank you both.
Yeah. Yes, please. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, that concludes building insight.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. That'll take us to item six, our Legislative Committee, and Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you, President Johnson. Uh, the legislator, legislators have been very busy this past weekend. So I think Mrs. Oakquist is going to give us an update on what's happening up in Lansing in, in regards to our return to learn plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford, and I will give a brief update. Um, we are still, uh, reading through all of the details with regard to this legislation. But, um, I'd like to first, um, thank and acknowledge Senator Paul Henke and Representative Potsky, um, both of whom were in regular contact with me, um, on this legislation and seeking, um, feedback and, uh, also advocating. Um, I know Senator Paul Henke added an additional amendment, um, to the legislation and sought to put that forward in the best interest of the students that we serve. So, um, we appreciate their continued dialogue with us, um, on items that are so impactful to our students and to our district. So this return, um, to learn bills really covers a number of different areas. One is the pupil count, which Mrs. Smith already shared with us this evening. Um, so they will use, be using the blended count of last year as 75% um, of our, uh, last year's count for enrollment and 25% of this year's count. Um, so that would really, really aim to have a more stable funding stream for districts as we move forward into next school year. Um, the, there is a requirement for an extended continuity of learning plan. So you might recall in April, one of the requirements that came out via executive order was the requirement of a continuity of learning plan. And so we had, um, many of our district teams working together on that. We submitted that to our ISD for approval and ultimately that was sent to the Michigan Department of Education on our behalf. Um, we are, we are now required, in addition to the template in the plan we just submitted last Friday that the board voted on last week, um, we will now be creating an extended continuity of learning plan um, that covers the areas of the necessity of the plan, why it is necessary to increase student achievement for the coming year, educational goals, mode of instruction, a requirement to recertify the plan within 30 calendar days of approving the original plan and the district's board must reconfirm, um, that every 30 days and include an opportunity for public comment. The plan must include academic standards, how we reach equitable access for all of our students, health and safety guidelines, and a K5 prioritization of in-person instruction. So that extended continuity of learning plan is something that, uh, we will be working on within our district, um, to create once we have the model for that. Um, that is something that the board will vote on in September and we will be required to submit and then reconfirm each month going forward while we are still under that plan. Um, the legislation also covered the days and hours requirement. So you're probably pretty familiar with the requirement of 180 days, 1,098 hours of instruction. So there is an allowance that, um, the bill waives that particular requirement, but only to the extent, um, that, that a district, um, may utilize, uh, its, its own plan for that instruction, instruction as long as, um, the result in the number of hours and days, um, are necessary to deliver all of the course content that would have been delivered normally in a 180-day school year covering that many hours. So essentially there is still the requirement that we cover all of the same teaching and learning standards. Um, but there is a flexibility with regard to how those hours and days are counted. Uh, there's a, there is a benchmark assessment requirement. So there is a requirement that students be assessed at the beginning of the year and the end of the year. Uh, at the beginning of the year, the district would be required to administer, um, one of five approved assessments within the first nine weeks of the school year and then again at the end of the year. So beyond using that data internally, uh, we would be required to also send that data to the state to be used in aggregate. Uh, in addition to that, um, there are, uh, uh, some other small provisions with regard to, um, attendance requirements and tracking attendance and tracking interact, two-way interaction between students and teachers um, that needs to be tracked and reported out to our board on a monthly basis. So while there are certainly elements of that legislation, um, such as the enrollment and how the number of students are counted for this school year, um, provide some flexibility that we were seeking. It does certainly add some additional requirements, uh, on districts with regard to the planning and the reporting out of those plans. Um, as you know, uh, that will certainly be there. We will certainly work diligently to meet all of the requirements of this, but we need to be cognizant of, um, of what that will require between now and the start of the school year. So, um, again, we appreciate the opportunity to have our voices heard and, um, in advocacy, um, for what is best for the students and, and staff that we serve. And we will continue to, um, read through each element of that, uh, legislation to be certain we are following the guidelines set forth.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Uh, Mrs. Frank.
I also would like to echo your comments, Mrs. Oakquist, about Senator Paul Henke and her tireless efforts on behalf of educators, um, in different ways and in different, um, educational, um, items that have come, come up. She has been a tireless advocate for education and we thank her for that. Um, these are hard times and figuring out how to keep educators, um, in, in districts accountable while not just giving us, um, paperwork and taking time away from the kids that we serve so that we can fill out more papers is, and, and doing things that are, are value-added to districts and students and ultimately to our families that we serve in our communities. And that's what we really want. And so I think Mrs. Oakquist, what you, what you said and, um, and some of these pieces, while the intent is great to make sure that districts are still providing the education to the kids, it provides so much, it, it, it places so much extra burden on districts who are trying to do so many things right now, pivot our whole way that we're educating kids and just is an added, um, workload for us in terms of what we're doing. We've already placed our plan, we're working our plan. We, we as a district, and I know that there are districts out there that need more oversight, but we work very diligently and our oversight is our community. And we work to serve them and we work to do the best that we can to serve them. And so some of this legislation that comes out feels very, very heavy because it doesn't feel like it's value-added to the students. It's just more work for the district. And so I just wanted to thank the senator for being so outspoken in terms of what is value-added for the districts and what's value-added for the students and how do we make the best possible decisions for the students? Um, and I think that we all as a community can continue to advocate for that and, um, share our voices that we need, um, legislation that helps us, that helps us grow, that helps us, um, in the district and we need them to release a budget, um, for what we are allowed to spend this year and, uh, that sort of thing. So while, while I see good work being done, I, I, I hope for... So while I see good work being done, I hope for more concrete information coming from our leadership in terms of money that is available to the districts. We know that there is money set aside for education, but monies that are available to districts, and what can we do to add and enhance districts and add to and enhance a student's education? So that's just my take on that. And I'd just like to see more leadership and more help to educators.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Anybody else? Okay, that concludes the Legislative Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford. That'll take us to item seven, Personnel Committee. Mrs. Frank.
We don't have anything, Mrs. Oquist. Is that correct? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. That'll take us to item eight, our Policy Committee. Mrs. Burton.
We don't have anything at this meeting. We will be taking care of some second readings and finalizing policy at our next meeting that'll be coming up shortly.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. That then brings us to the end of our agenda for the Committee of the Whole Meeting. And as long as everybody is agreement, we'll go right into our regular meeting. Everybody good with that? Great. We ready to go, Mr. McDonald, right away? Wonderful. All right, then I want to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Board of Education for August 17, 2020. Again, we are coming to you virtually. If you have been watching in Committee of the Whole, you'll see that we had significant discussion on the items that are on the agenda for this evening. And so you won't hear as much discussion at this meeting as you did at the Committee of the Whole. So we're gonna, we're gonna jump right into it, and I'll ask Mrs. Battlefield to take the role.
Mrs. Bradford?
Here.
Mrs. Burton?
Here.
Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mrs. Frank?
Here.
Sorry. Mrs. Battlefield is here. President Johnson?
Here. We do have a quorum. Thank you. And that'll take us to item two, our pledge. And Mrs. Bradford, you'll lead us, and Mrs. Jarvis has the flag.
Thank you, President Johnson. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
Republic.
For which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
A nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all. Thank you, Mrs. Bradford.
You're welcome.
I haven't done this for the last few meetings, but I'm going to do it again this evening. That is, read our district climate goal. And that says, "All students will experience a positive, safe, and welcoming..." Last couple of weeks, the board has received hundreds of emails. For the most part, and generally speaking, while many of those have been passionate on one side or the other, they have been extremely respectful to the board and to anyone that the email was sent to. So you are upholding what we want our community to look like with the respect, and we appreciate that, and we want to thank you for that. With that, we'll go into Communications. Item 3A is written communications. I do not have any written communications. Are there any members of the board that have any? Seeing none, we'll move into Audience Communication. And as anyone was in attendance at our Committee of the Whole meeting, I wanted to indicate that the board has three roles. One role is to set policy. A second role is to hire and evaluate the superintendent. And our third role is to align the budget with our long-term fiscal goals. In Audience Communication, if your audience communication relates to any one of those three items and you're seeking a response, that response would come from the board. If your audience communication relates to anything else, such as the day-to-day operations of the district, then those communications or response would come from the administration. So we just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that before we begin. And I understand, Mrs. Jenkins, we have two Audience Communications for this meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you, President Johnson. I'll go ahead and read those communications now. These were submitted through our Google form on our website. The first communication is from Bridget Casey. "This is for the board to hear and consider and to warn the working parents of LPS. The nightmare everyone has been talking about when it comes to working parents and remote learning is 10 times worse. I'm just saying, every working parent with lower elementary students, our kids are going to fall extremely behind. It is day three of Nigirro. The teachers have been amazing. The remote schedule is great. The administrator has been surprisingly very timely with email responses. The problems for working parents and parents with multiple kids are enormous. The Chromebooks or hotspot isn't charged, so a class is missed. The sound isn't working on a Chromebook, but I'm working, so nothing is said, and my kid is sitting there looking at a screen with no sound. I walk by, and he's drawing pictures instead of writing answers. I ask why. He says his name wasn't called, so the question was it for him? I cannot work and make sure he is doing what is expected of him. I'm seriously worried I may lose my job. This is a nightmare, and the stress between him and me is through the roof. LPS needs to open the schools or come up with a solution. I cannot afford daycare. I do not have a babysitter. I can't do a pod because I have to work, and I cannot keep stopping to make sure he is getting onto his class or doing what he is supposed to be doing. This is a complete disaster. The school board doesn't care either. If they did, they would have stuck to the two options that the committee came up with. Just wait until it's thousands of kids like mine and hundreds of parents like me come September. Will LPS be providing tutors for the kids of working parents that fall behind? Because, again, this was your choice to begin with. What is the LPS plan to catch all these kids back up? If you don't want us in school, what is your plan? You owe us that. Are you, as board members, going to let me drop off my kid to ensure he is in his class on time with no problems and do what he is supposed to be doing? No. But you have no problem letting the kids who don't have parents able to sit with them just drift further and further? I am living this in real time. It isn't just talk now. This is an LPS parent and student experience. Parents, it's time to really speak up because in three weeks, this will be you. The fact that there is no set in-person start date is the scariest part. By then, I may be jobless, or my child may not be attending class. The problems, worry, nightmares are all worse than you are expecting. This is remote learning of a second-grade working family." The next communication is from D. Locke. "Please be aware that certain measures, such as relying on self-reported or parent-reported temperatures, or even staff-measured temperatures, are likely to cause a false sense of security. LPS is understandably defaulting to the recommendations of local public health professionals when they recommend parents take a child's temperature at home or keep a sick student home. But public health departments advise these ineffective measures because they don't really have much else to offer right now. Even if you could ensure that every human walking into the building is febrile that morning, this does not mean a certain percentage of those humans are not carrying the coronavirus in a pre-symptomatic stage or experiencing an active but asymptomatic infection. Likewise, a questionnaire about recent symptoms will also provide primarily emotional reassurance as opposed to true prevention of infection. Unfortunately, there will be situations where someone has been febrile or has been symptomatic in some other way, or knows that they have been exposed to someone with COVID-19, and they should themselves be quarantining, but for whatever reason decides to proceed to school that morning regardless. A dose of Tylenol would be enough to fool the temperature screening, and little white lies will be enough to pass the questionnaire. I hope and pray that we can expect better from our community, but I am not willing to gamble other people's health and safety on this expectation of honesty. Then there are students and staff members who might be sneezing because of seasonal allergies. There are individuals who might run a low-grade fever because they have an undiagnosed thyroid or autoimmune disorder. They could be sent home, even though they are not currently a threat to other people in the building, while someone else who truly is a threat walks right in. Until point-of-service COVID testing becomes available in an affordable and easy-to-administer form, we will just be rolling the dice every day as people enter the buildings. Therefore, it is imperative that mask use and physical distancing requirements are enforced. Right now, our society is being subjected to a very bad set of circumstances without easy answers. So please do everything in your power to minimize the risk within LPS facilities. We already have people in just about every public place using bad mask techniques or defying the rules altogether." And that concludes our Audience Communication for tonight's regular meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins, and thanks to everyone who submitted a communication this evening. That will then take us to item C, Response to Prior Audience Communication. Do we have any responses to prior? I don't believe so. Seeing none, we'll move to item D, District Update from the Superintendent. Good evening, Mrs. Oquist.
Thank you, President Johnson, members of our board and cabinet team and our community. So following last week's board meeting on Monday, August 10, we sent out to our community a letter updating our community on the board's actions on Monday evening. We also included a detailed Frequently Asked Questions document that was really a compilation of many of the questions we received, either in email communications via our survey or via Audience Communications. That Frequently Asked Questions document will continue to be updated throughout the next several weeks and can be found on the front page of our website under the Return to Learn page. In addition, we had a one-page summary sheet that defined for parents the choices that they had with regard to the traditional programming or the choice of Livonia Virtual. We are now in the process of working to staff and create student schedules based from the responses with regard to Livonia Virtual. We are excited to get that program going along with our regular program for the school year for Safe Start September. We have PD planned through Mrs. O'Brien and the Academic Services Department, and many of our colleagues who have been working on that throughout the summer. So as our staff returns August 31, we are prepared with professional development to support them in their work with our students, both in remote learning and in planning for a robust program ahead. You also know that we have an updated Wayne County Health Department manual. We have now linked that on our Return to Learn website. So they have finalized that. I believe they will continue to update that as we learn more and as they add information to it. But that is something where we have included portions of that on our Return to Learn website, and we now have that manual linked. If anyone would like the full detailed information with regard to that. So that really lays out the processes and protocols that every district in our county are required to use with regard to any suspected cases of the virus, confirmed cases of the virus, with regard to actions taken for quarantine or responding to any symptomatic or positive cases. A big focus, as you heard earlier this evening, is also on our PPE, Continued PPE Procurement, our supply chain, and getting those resources out to our schools and each of our departments. We have all of our administrators back in the district, and we are certainly pleased to have them to continue to partner with our cabinet team as we plan for the start of the school year. So our community can look for Continued Communications to come out to us each week as we lead up to school, not only from the district, but they will now start receiving those from their schools as well with more detailed information with regard to some of the normal start-of-school activities, like how do I find out my child's schedule and who their teacher will be, all the way to more details about Google Classroom and learning about the start for remote learning. We know that communication is important, and we appreciate the patience that folks have shown as we've created many communications since the board's action on Monday, and we continue to work hard toward implementing the plan we brought to you at that time. So we are busy at work, and we are excited to begin the new school year with our students and with all of our LPS colleagues. Thank you, President Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. That'll then take us to item four, our Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Hold on just a second. "Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent and agenda items as recommended by the superintendent: 5a, minutes of the regular meeting of July 27, 2020; 5b, minutes of the organizational meeting of July 27, 2020; 5c, minutes of the special meeting of August 3, 2020; 5d, minutes of the special meeting of August 10, 2020; 6a, approval of the 2020-2021 tuition rate; 6b, purchase of copy paper for 2020-2021."
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Are there any questions or comments on this item?
Supported by Mrs. Jarvis.
Oh, Mrs. Jarvis. I'm sorry. I thought I heard Mrs. Bradford. I'll make that correction. Any discussion or questions on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to accept the consent agenda. Mrs. Battlefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
You are muted.
Yes.
It wouldn't come off mute. I'm sorry. Yes.
Thank you. And then, Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Battlefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. That takes us then to item 6c, Refunding of Prior Bonds. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
"Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the attached resolution to ratify the refunding of the 2013 Bonds, Series 1, and the 2014 refunding bonds."
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. Smith, just bring us up to date, if you would.
Thank you, President Johnson. I won't go over all the details as we just ran through this at our committee meeting, but I wanted to share again, this in essence is like a... cost associated with it, which will not be borne by our general fund, but the projected savings for our taxpayers will be well over $10 million in interest savings. And again, that's not money that will be coming back to the district for additional spending. That is lowering our outstanding debt payments, so less that would have to be levied on our taxpayers. So wonderful opportunity, and that's why we're bringing it for the board tonight for your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to approve the resolution regarding the refunding of prior bonds. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Smith. Yes.
I think Mrs. Frank had a comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. I just didn't want this to go by. I know that we just talked about it 10 minutes ago in the first meeting, but I do just want to call to attention, not to belabor the point, but a savings of $10 million is so significant, and I really think our taxpayers, it would, even though we just talked about it, I just think our taxpayers, I want them to know that this is something that the district takes seriously, that we aggressively try to, anytime we can save taxpayer dollars that are spent using the money that we have to put into the classrooms. And so I just, I just, this is momentous for the district. This is a huge savings for the district. This is a huge savings for our taxpayers, and, and the real winners are the kids in the classroom. And so I just want to thank you all for your diligence with this, Mrs. Smith, for working so hard on this, keeping us abreast of all of these things that you've been working on behind the scenes. This is very, very important work, and so I, I don't want, just want to skip past it, even though we've talked about it in the previous meeting, but I just think it's vital and it's just a huge effort. So thank you so much to our, to our staff and to, to all the hard work that goes into making these kinds of decisions for our community and for our kids. So thank you, and this is a really big deal, and we are thrilled with it.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. That'll move us to item six D, purchase of data center hardware. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of data center hardware and services from CDWG Vernon Hills, Illinois, in the amount of $296,650.47.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield, and Mr. Francis. I'm sorry.
Mrs. Frank.
And Mrs. Frank. Speak right up there, folks. Okay. Mr. Francis?
Yes, President Johnson. This recommendation is, as mentioned, for hardware and services for the head-end room. It is critical, going to house critical services for the district, important items such as internet security, our HVAC controls, et cetera. This is a, an item that would be coming from the district technology fund, and we recommend approval by the board.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, to approve the purchase of data center hardware. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. And it takes us to item six E, purchase of carts and laptops. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of laptop computers and charging carts from CDWG Vernon Hills, Illinois, in the amount of $153,306.
Support.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers and Mr. Francis again.
Thank you, President Johnson. These laptop carts and laptop computers are going to be used in two, two different sets that we're talking about here. We have one cart full that will be used by administration, building, central office staff members, both for checkout, so they can work in meetings, on the go, et cetera, as well as if needed from distance, virtually. And the other six carts are going to be placed in our high schools for student use, and those could be both in school or even potentially virtually, depending on need, but, but we are basically trying to get more mobile devices in the hands of, of students, and that will be from the district technology fund, and that would be pretty much the end of the district technology fund that has been around, as many of you know, for, for a very long time. So we, we essentially had used this fund to buy as many laptops and carts as we could.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Francis, one question, moving forward then, would items such as this come through the sinking fund?
They, they could, they could come through the general fund, they could come through capital improvements, I mean, but, but generally with the new passage of our sinking fund and the language approved in the, the law from, from the state, we would be able to do classroom technology through the sinking fund. That is one way.
Great.
So it gives us more, gives, gives Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Oquist a couple of options.
We like options.
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers, to approve the purchase of carts and laptops. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. That takes us to item six F, purchase of personal protective equipment. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of personal protective equipment from Ferguson Facilities Supply, Belleville, Michigan, in the amount of $54,650, and School Specialty, Chicago, Illinois, in the amount of $122,296, for a total purchase price of $176,946.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford, and Mr. Francis once again.
Thank you, sir. These items, we have a variety of items, as mentioned previously in the committee of the whole, from School Specialty Plexiglas barriers, both three-sided as well as a single pane, and multiple items from Ferguson Facilities, which would be such as the disposable wipes, the, the buckets. We have child shields, child-sized masks, disposable gloves, et cetera. And as mentioned previously, while this may be the first time that we've brought a purchase of these type of items to the board, it is certainly not the first time we have been purchasing these items. This is merely because of the minimum amount, I shouldn't say minimum amount, but the amount that is required for board approval from both of these vendors. We have been purchasing cleaning supplies, disinfecting supplies, personal protective equipment for several months now, and we continue to do so, and whenever those costs will rise to the level of requiring board approval, we will bring them to you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions, comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the purchase of personal protective equipment. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, and President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to item six G, purchase of furniture for art classrooms, 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of elementary art room furniture from Interior Environments, Novi, Michigan, for a total purchase price of $136,573.43.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Burton and Mr. Francis.
Thank you again. The proposed furniture purchase consists of butcher block tables, stools, and chairs for elementary and middle school classrooms. These are going to be replacing items that are more than 20 years old, and this is coming from the 2013 bond fund, as Mrs. Oquist mentioned earlier. When we brought together some, some folks to, to discuss what we would like to be able to replace and put in place with any remaining bond funds, our specials area slash elective area folks came to mind. As you know, we focus quite a bit on furniture in all of our classrooms, and the furniture in the art classrooms were, were of a priority at this point, so we are following through and recommending to you this purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
You're welcome.
Questions, questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Burton, to approve the purchase of furniture for art classrooms, 2013 bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to item six H, purchase of technology for special education, Act 18. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of technology for the special education students and staff utilizing Act 18 funds for a total amount of $96,509.65.
Support.
Did I hear Mrs. Jarvis or Mrs. Frank?
Mrs. Jarvis.
Mrs. Jarvis. We have a motion by Mrs., Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Dr. Terrell, good evening.
Good evening, President Johnson. As stated previously at our committee of the whole meeting, we are recommending the purchase of 70 iPads for use for our students and staff, as well as 100 HP Pro Books, also for students and staff, in our MOCHI program, our visually impaired program, our ASP program, and our work skills program.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to approve the purchase of technology for special education, Act 18. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you all. That takes us now to item seven, our personnel matters. Item A is teachers for approval. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer enforcement for the 2020, 2021 school year to the teachers listed on the attached document.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by, I heard, Mrs. Bradford, and Mr. McDonald. Good evening.
Good evening, President Johnson. The individuals that we are presenting to the board this evening are qualified to fill these positions, and they have been fully vetted through our intensive, excuse me, interview processes. We are confident that these teachers will, will perform at a high level and represent the Livonia Public Schools in a manner that is consistent with both our shared vision and our collective commitments. These positions have been included in the 2021 budget and are in an area of need. We are pleased to be recommending such a talented group of individuals and are excited to get them working with our students in just a few weeks. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank the many administrators who have been part of the interviewing, excuse me, and hiring process. This is a labor-intensive task, and our administrators put in countless hours to ensure that we are bringing you the best candidates possible.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Questions or comments from the board?
Welcome to Livonia Public Schools.
Indeed. I also want to thank you for hiring someone from the University of Toledo. It warms my heart. Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the approval of teachers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations. That takes us now to item seven B, recall of teachers. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent and recall to district employment as a teacher for the 2021, 20, let's try that again, for the 2020, 21 school year. The person listed on the attached document dated August 17, 2020.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mr. McDonald, once again.
Thank you, President Johnson. Following board authorization on June 15, 2020, to begin the recall procedure, the process was initiated. The attached document contains the names of two teachers who have been recalled. These positions, again, are within the 2021 budget guidelines. Currently, the only layoff remains as, as a one counselor who has a reduction in hours. And again, these positions are within our 2020, 21 budget guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Questions or comments from the board? The, the only thing I, I might note, and I don't know whether we need to amend the motion, there are two names on the list, and the motion seems to indicate singular. It says, as a teacher, the person listed. Do we need to amend, or does every, is everybody good with the way it is?
We could just have the motion reread with, with persons.
With those corrections?
Because it's the verbal that, that, that it goes into the record.
I'd be happy to reread it, President Johnson.
Go ahead, Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent and recall to district employment as teachers for the 2020, 21 school year. The people lis- the people listed on the attached document dated August 17, 2020.
Support.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Is that you?
Yes, it is.
So we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, the reread motion, supported by Mrs. Burton. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, and President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to item 7C, leaves of absence. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the requests for a leave of absence as listed below. Whitney Cable, November 20, 2020, and Rebecca Geethahein, August 31, 2020.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you again, President Johnson. You have before you the names of two employees requesting a leave of absence for the 2020-21 school year. This request is in accordance with the collective bargaining agreements for each employee's bargaining unit. May I ask that you consider approval of said request?
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to approve the leaves of absence. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. That takes us to item 7D. This does not require a motion. It is for board information only. That moves us then to item 7E, retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Jacqueline Bites, Kenneth Braun, Deborah Glenn, Carol Kelly, Gail Wilhelm Lees.
Support.
I didn't get who?
Mrs. Burton?
Mrs. Burton? We have a motion by-
There were several.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Burton. And once again, we'll hear from Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. Tonight, we bring before you five employees who will be retiring. As these employees leave the Livonia Public Schools, they take with them a combined total of 123 years of experience. On behalf of the administration, I would like to thank these employees for their dedicated years of service that they have provided the students of LPI. And I ask that the board adopts the attached resolution of appreciation for these retirees.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Comments from the board?
Congratulations.
Quite an accomplishment, 123 years between five people. It's a lot of years.
Thank you and best wishes to each of you.
Yes, congratulations.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Burton, to accept the resolutions of appreciation for employees who are retiring. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, and President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Once again, good luck to all of you. That takes us now to item 8, hearing from board members. Item A is second reading and adoption of board policy. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for the following. Board policy GAA, personnel slash non-discrimination; GAB, personnel slash non-discriminatory employment practices; GAEA, personnel slash non-discriminatory harassment of employees or applicants for employment; JAA, students slash equal educational opportunities; JCED, students slash discriminatory harassment of students.
Support.
I had stereo. I think I heard Mrs. Frank. So we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank. And Mrs. Oakquist will lead us in a little discussion tonight.
Actually, Dr. Terrell will be walking us through these.
Oh, Dr. Terrell. All right.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell.
Sure, thank you very much. Five of the policies that Mrs. Burton just named are related to non-discrimination for personnel and student, and they have been updated to reflect federal language for Title VII, as well as Title IX. The language updated in our policies have been reviewed by our district attorney here in Livonia. These federal language include sexual orientation, gender identity, transgender status, and sexual harassment. These policies have been presented to the board for discussion and review at our last study session, the last Committee of the Hall, and for the first reading at our last regular meeting on July 27.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Burton?
Yes, these policies also, Dr. Terrell, correct me if I'm wrong, are, in order to make certain that our policies are in compliance with the recent federal Supreme Court ruling in terms of employment practices. That is correct. Okay. I also noted when I was reading through these that we do have the same language that appears consistently throughout all five. We missed one phrase in policy GAB. We need to add the phrase "sexual identity" so that it is consistent with the other policies, when it's talking about, let me see, get the verbiage here. Sexual, the phrase that appears, that comes from the Supreme Court and that we need to reflect in our policies is sexual orientation, sexual identity, or transgender status. And we have done so in all five policies. We omitted the sexual identity phrase in GAB, so we need to add that in.
Mrs. Wozniak, I know you're taking note of that, and we will be certain to make that change as these new policies are, or as these revised policies are uploaded on our website. Thank you.
There was a lot of repetitive language in there, so took going through it with fine-tooth comb, and all of a sudden something popped out, so. And thank you very much to Mrs. Wozniak, who does an enormous amount of work on policies. We've been going through updating policies pre-COVID crisis. We have been doing just an enormous amount of policy work, and it sounds like a quick typographical change, and they're not. They are, because each policy is handled independently and is uploaded onto our website. It is an enormous amount of work on the part of our cabinet and then our board, but also on the part of Mrs. Wozniak, once these get approved, to get them up onto our website so that they're accessible to all of our, all of our community at any time. So thank you very much, Jill. It is very, very appreciated.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton, and thank you for catching that little omission. As you indicated, the languages are very, very similar, and unless you have the eye for policy like you have, we sometimes miss those things, so we appreciate that very much. Any other questions or comments on these policies? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, to approve the second reading and adoption of board policy. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, and President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you all. That now brings us to item 8B, hearing from board members. And as has become customary, we will open it up at this time to any board members who have any comments or would like to make any statements. So just raise your hand and let me know. Mrs. Burton?
I would really like to thank everybody involved in the entire process of return to learn, and that pretty much includes anybody in this listening audience right now, starting with our superb superintendent Andrea Oakquist. Our cabinet team has devoted literally morning, noon, and night since March to making certain that our students in Livonia Public Schools are educated to the best of our ability, and that we are holding that bar very, very high. We've had comments lately about working some weekends and so forth, and let it not be misunderstood. This work has been going on for months, not just a week or two, and not just over a weekend, but months since March. Our teachers and our support staff have been teaching remotely, have been delivering meals, have been supporting our students virtually when they had social emotional needs. Our parents have gone way beyond where our parents typically go in the education of their child. And we talk about our parents in our schools being, working hand in hand. Well, those hands have gotten really mixed up in the pot quite a bit over the last several months, and it will be for the next at least several weeks. This is certainly not easy for anybody. There's not a human being who, in any developed nation that I can think of, that has not been personally affected by this whole COVID crisis. And we thank our Livonia community for working with us as graciously as the vast majority have. We ask for, or I ask anyway for myself, for grace for one another, for parents, for administrators, for teachers and support staff, and for our children who are needing to learn in a different way than we have in the past. And we have not had years and years of experience to draw on, as we have most of our other educational practices. I would just like to thank very much everyone who's trying to get through this very, very stressful time with, as well as we all can, while we collectively support our students. The phrase "it takes a village" has been around for years and years now, but this is certainly one where they have to behave differently and support one another differently in order to get through this to the best of our ability. As board members, I thank all the, literally hundreds of staff and parents who wrote to us. Most of us have a very good policy within ourselves that we return every email, and I am very sorry to say that it's been impossible. We have had hundreds. You have our word. We've read them all, but replying to each individual one. I know for myself, I've not been able to, and just keep up with the incoming emails and make sure that I'm reading everything that's coming in. We ask for your grace in that respect. You do have our word that we have read every single email. We've all come to difficult decisions, board members, cabinet members, parents certainly in the district, and we're all doing the best that we can to get through this and educate our students. So thank you from the bottom of my heart to our team that we work with at Livonia Public Schools, our entire cabinet administrative and staff team. You folks have been stellar, absolutely stellar. I'm so proud to be part of Livonia Public Schools. And parents, thank you for the grace that so many of you are offering to everyone who's working together and the appreciation of the fact that there are no easy answers right now. We're going to educate our students together to the best of our ability. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Other comments from the board? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Johnson. On a lighter note, I would like to take a moment and recognize the PTAs from Kennedy, from Webster, and from the Jackson Early Childhood Center. Each of these PTA units was recognized at the recent Michigan PTA State Meeting and awarded a membership award because of stellar membership growth last year. It seems almost mundane to be talking about becoming a PTA member in a year like this, when everything else is upside down, but we have at least this shred of normalcy. Please, join your PTA at your school. We have to hang on to what normal things we can find. And I think the connectivity and the community provided by joining your PTA will go a long way towards easing the tensions, not only at our schools, but with our children, our parents, and our entire community. Congratulations to these three units and outstanding work.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Any other comments from the board tonight? Seeing none, I think Mrs. Burton said it all. We appreciate that. Thank you. So is there any other business to be brought before the board this evening?